I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting at 6:30 PM from the Johnson Community Center and Zoom. This meeting is being recorded by the City Council and GCTV-17. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify me at this time. Is anyone recording? If any, in accordance with MGL 30A, no persons shall address a meeting of the public body without permission of the Chair, and all persons shall, at the request of the Chair, be silent. No persons shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If after clear warning from the Chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceeding, the Chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting, and if the person does not withdraw, the Chair may authorize a Constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting. Roll call of members.
Counselor Golub?
Here.
President Gwynn?
Here.
Counselor Disorga?
Here.
Counselor Bottomley?
Here.
Counselor Bullock?
Here.
Counselor Gilmore?
Here.
Counselor Lapinski?
Present.
Counselor Mayo?
Here.
Counselor Healy is not in attendance tonight. Counselor Elmer?
Here.
Vice President Forgji?
Here.
Counselor Ricketts?
Present.
Counselor Toranzo?
Here.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance, voluntary. Can I have a motion to approve the January 5th?
So move Ricketts.
Second, Forgji.
There's a motion on the floor to accept the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any corrections? Seeing none, we're good. Communications from the Superintendent of School and the School Committee, and I do believe I see them both.
Nice to see you all. Happy February. You know, usually I get, I mostly get to do the good news, but tonight we have kind of reversed roles, and I get the boring stuff. I apologize ahead of time. Next week is the February School Vacation Week, starting with Presidents' Day on Monday the 20th, running through the 24th, Friday. We also are in the budget process, as the whole city is, and we had originally posted our required public hearing for the budget to be on Thursday, March 2nd, at 6:00 PM at the high school, and we are going to have to change that meeting because after a very helpful discussion with Clerk Scott this afternoon, it was determined that we didn't put enough information in the posting about the budget process for it to be the right posting. And so we're going to have, and that is a 21-day posting requirement. So our goal is tomorrow to get the updated posting to the recorder with a plan for all remote special meeting, public hearing on Friday, the 10th of March, likely during the day, but we don't have quorum determined yet, we don't have a time yet, but that will go out tomorrow. And thank you to Clerk Scott for helping us out with that, and I apologize for any confusion. We had kind of publicized it, but we also knew we might have not done the posting correctly. We were hoping to follow up with more detail, but that really doesn't meet the spirit of the open meeting law, so we're not doing that. We're going to reschedule for the 10th. And then, you all know I love our cafeteria workers. They are our heroes in the school district, and I'm super excited. I teased to President Gwynn last week when I saw him out in town that we had a nice surprise tonight. I'm super excited about this, but like I said, I'm going to let the Superintendent actually talk about the surprise from our food service folks, in whatever order you want to talk about it, but I just had to tease it again because it's so awesome.
I have to start with that now because you had such a lead-up. So I shared at the school committee meeting last Wednesday that we are very pleased to share that the Greenfield Public Schools Food Service Department has a food truck. So there was a grant that apparently I signed right after starting, and I profess I don't remember the first few weeks after I started, so I believe I signed the grant application that was written by our prior food service director, and we learned not that long ago that we were awarded the grant, which would provide $146,000 toward a food truck. The Food Service Department budget was able to absorb the remainder, which was about $35,000. The point of the truck is to serve meals to, throughout the community, to our students, and it is meant to be a primary mobile site for the summer eats program. Those are reimbursable meals through the National Food Service Programs, but we have started just based, just started conversations with the city because we would love to have opportunities to have the food truck out in different areas during the summer and potentially during the school year outside of school hours to serve the community. So we're beginning to do some research on how that could work. The Food Service Director, Greta, would like with your agreement to come in March, and she will have pictures of the food truck, and she'll be able to show it off and show you some of the things that are inside of it and talk about the options that would be available to our students with that. So that's very exciting. We've been able to spend some time talking about the wrap that is on it for the decoration, and it's been very exciting.
It's wrapped for the Green Wave, right?
Green Wave is on it, absolutely.
It's going to be so cool.
And then, the other wonderful news is that we are proud to share, we have two Grin spoon award winners. That is the Pioneer Valley Excellence in Teaching Awards, and this year's winners are Shannon Eaton, who is a 6th grade English Language Arts teacher at our middle school, and Deb Richardson, who is a kindergarten teacher at Federal Street School. They were both, I was able to surprise them both at their, in their classrooms with some balloons last Monday, and then Wednesday night, they were both able to attend school committee where they were appropriately embarrassed in public again. But they, the criteria for nominations are excellence in teaching practices, effectiveness and creativity, impact on students, support of and positive impact upon other teachers' practice, participation in professional development, and evidence of going above and beyond in classroom and school community. And both of our winners had multiple nominations from their colleagues, so it was pretty easy to identify both of them. So there will be an evening banquet at the Log Cabin, April 26th, then both winners will be able to bring family members to celebrate with them, and then I am also able to attend, and the building administrators where these ladies are from will also. So there'll be a nice contingent to celebrate them at the Log Cabin. And I will report that we are very productively moving along and negotiating all of our units at this point. Very, feeling very optimistic about our process.
All right. Is there any questions on anything that was brought to us tonight? Was there a question? Counselor Golub, did you have a question?
You all just want to get out of here, don't you?
Anything else returning? Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah, congratulations to, a lot of good things.
Great news.
Positivity is always well-received. The Mayor?
Good evening, Counselors and residents, both here and online. So I have three, two quick updates and a surprise. So regularly, I meet in standing meetings with our legislative contingent, Senator Commerford, Representative Whipps, and Representative Blaze, and we typically meet via a phone call, and it works out really well, mindful of their time and mindful of our time. So I have some legislative updates because this is the beginning of the legislative season, year, whatever, and we discussed several bills of note that are before them, that have been filed and/or supported by each of our Western Mass delegation. And so I was asked to support them myself, and I think it would be important in, for City Council to consider weighing in as well on each of them. They're going to be fairly familiar to you. The first one is an act creating, it is, at the moment, Senate Bill 2257. It is one that went through the last legislature and made it to committee but did not make it out of committee, but it's worthwhile, and certainly the Senator felt it was worthwhile to bring it back up for this legislative term. So it's an act creating a municipal and public safety building authority, and this is a bill that would create a process for funding public buildings other than libraries and schools. It's hard to believe that we have a school building authority and we have a library building authority and the rest of us out here in the hinterlands for two very important, I mean, I say two, other important municipal buildings have to fund it all on our own. We have no funding stream for it, no building authority for your municipal buildings, that could be your city halls or other important buildings, and for your public safety buildings. So as we all know, we're funding a public safety building now with no grant money and no help from the state. So this is a bill that would create a process for funding public buildings and, other than libraries and schools, and I'm happy that those two very important buildings are funded through a building authority, but they left the rest of, the rest of them out. And Senator, I particularly like that last year when I kept saying, what is the issue with the bill, with this particular bill? It was coming up with a funding stream. So Senator Commerford and some other people worked very hard and did a lot of research and came up with what I think is a wonderful funding stream for it, and that is marijuana tax revenue. So we might get back some of that $15,000 fee that we can no longer charge by virtue of being able to put it into some municipal buildings. But anyway, Senator Commerford has made it clear that Greenfield's advocacy on this has really been instrumental in getting the bill this far. So I would like very much to encourage you, and I can certainly send you more information on it, to also weigh in, and she was very pointed in saying, you know, you don't have to wait for a hearing to contact your Senate, your legislative delegation and others. So I'll follow up with some resources on how to do that. The second one is an act relative to, and that is HD, so that's a House bill, 811. It's an act relative to tax deeds and protecting equity for homeowners facing foreclosure, AKA the Equity Theft Bill, and that will be coming up for hearings as well. And the third one, and this is as Senator Commerford has filed legislation for this bill, it is an act fairly reimbursing local school transportation of foster children. So it's a statewide mandate, the bill is a statewide mandate on the topic of owed reimbursements for educational expenses, that the state must demand the reimbursements they are due from the feds for these expenses. So that is SD 612. I, I haven't read that one, so I don't have a lot of detail on it, but it's a good first step in getting that $700,000 or so money that's been owed for, to Greenfield schools from, for a lot, for a decade or more. So that's it for, at the moment, for legislative action, other than to just say, as I said, you don't have to wait to hear, to go to a hearing or send something in for a hearing, you can start your advocacy on any one of those or other things whenever you wish to do that. Excuse me. Next, we too at the city level have started the next round of union negotiations. We will be starting with four different units, that, it's five if you're really counting. We sort of put these together, although they don't negotiate together. It's the DPW and Central Maintenance, the clerical unit, and the S Unit. The S Unit is your department heads, many of them, not all, and supervisors and so forth. And lastly, the surprise, I have Danny here with me to give you a preview of the new website for the city of Greenfield, which everybody's fingers crossed, including Fernando's, will launch, hopefully, we do that a little better tonight, Jenny, Counselor Disorga, on the 22nd. So next week, on the 22nd, we will launch our new city website, and I just want to give yet another shout-out to Caitlin Von Schmidt, who has been extremely instrumental both in the design of it and making, and you have no idea, nor did I, how much work is involved in this. So a shout-out to Caitlin. I'll turn it over to Danny, if that's all right with you, Dan, for a few minutes.
You're going to go over your time limit, but please give us this presentation.
I'll be very fast.
No, no, but I'm just saying, go ahead and update us, please.
Super. So I just grabbed, this is, this is the site as it stands now, and so I chose a few slides of different pages that maybe don't, they don't have a lot of red writing on it, and if you're a department head right now in the city of Greenfield, you know what red writing means. It means you owe Caitlin some edits. So I'm trying not to do that. So I thought I'd walk you through just a couple of things. It's really beautiful, and hopefully it'll be really user-friendly for everybody. So this is the homepage, and as you can see, you scroll down to see latest news, just like you do on the current website, and in fact, some of this is live, as in the most recent news that's gone out is on the new version of the website as well. So we have right here, big news today, city seeks proposals to upgrade the parking garage system, which you guys may have heard about, and so here, you click, from there, you go to the actual press release, and this is just like it works now on the website. And one thing I want to point out is down here, when you're seeing this on mobile, a lot of these phone numbers and things now, not all of them were live and working properly on our current website, they will all be live and working properly, as well as the entire site will be ADA acceptable, I mean, excuse me, accessible to everyone. I'm having a little trouble with my share screen here. Here we go. So then the next page I wanted to show you was, so there's a couple of Board and Commission pages. When you go to Government, you'll go down and choose your area, so Board and Commission pages, the Rec Commission, they got their edits in. So here you can see, we've really simplified and made it into what we do with some bullet points, so the regular people in the world who aren't plugged in will understand what these different commissions do, when they meet. If it operates under some form of law, charter, MGL, something else, we'll link to that here, so people can go and read about that if they want to, and right here, it'll link to the calendar for any upcoming meetings. And down here, we have our commissioners, as well as staff contact with live links to email whoever the staff contact is. I wanted to point out another board here. Oh, here, oh, look at it, there's a City Council. That's you guys. And so we did a little bit of research as well, and I helped Caitlin with some of this for certain pages about, you know, finding out, you know, what does this body do? So here's City Council with a quick overview of what a City Council does, has a little explanation of your standing committees, and then it links to each of those committee pages, responsibilities, meeting schedule, why do we have one, who's my precinct, or what is my precinct, so you can find out who your counselor is right here on the city page, as well as a few other places. So Caitlin's goal, she said today to me, is that she wants to try and anticipate any question that anybody might have and answer it. We are modifying her expectations before we go live because that's, that is probably not possible, but we're doing a pretty good job. Caitlin's doing a good job. Whoops, wrong page. This little Zoom doodad gets in my way. And then I just want to show you like two other things. Open Government is what I wanted to show you, so we'll just.
Not a dog call, I don't think.
Yeah. So we have the Open Government page now, and here we have it as well. These little training boxes keep popping up because it's not a real page. So under Open Government, we'll have what you've seen in the past, this will be modified a little because right now it's a little redundant, but we'll have here where you can go and read the budgets, the charter, the code, you can look at your property cards, GIS information, and we will be adding the section for putting in public records requests and other requests here, too. And that's really it right now. I mean, it is deep, there, we have, when we saw the site map, it is a labyrinth of pages, and some of them are being combined, some of them will go away, because, you know, as you know, sometimes over time, these things get a little, little clustered. So we are looking forward to launching, we're all eager. I just want to remind everybody, as computers go, when you launch a new website, sometimes the old site is cached, which means it still shows up on some people's computers for a little while, so it'll be about three weeks-ish usually before everybody in the world, when they go to greenfield-ma.gov, will see the new site, and during that time, we'll be refining any weird things we see, and if you have any suggestions during that time, we would be open to it.
Well, thank you for that. I think it'll be well-received when it's up and running. I know Caitlin's been working on this a lot. Are there any questions for the Mayor or Chief of Staff Letourneau from anything they presented tonight, or any follow-ups? I see two. Counselor Lapinski?
So I just want to make one point about that City Council page, whereas, on the what we do, whereas on some of them, it says adopting or amending, under the budget, it simply says adopting, and I would propose that we actually do have the power to amend.
Counselor Golub?
And a couple of things, I want to start by saying thank you for the work on the website. I know how much goes into that, and it's a very important accessibility issue, so I appreciate all the energy that you both have put into that, and also for the legislative update, and in particular on, I think you said SD 612, and the money that Greenfield is owed, and thank you for your efforts on that. And my question, I imagine that you, you watched the A&amp;O meeting and heard some of my concerns about the Public Safety Commission appointments, and so just a question about the process with that, just wondering what the interview, the in-person interview process was with each of the candidates, and how many interviews happened, and what that, what that process entailed.
Are you talking about the two people that are before you tonight, or in general, or both?
I'm talking specifically about, I believe that, I'm not sure if I have this accurate, but there were five people who put their names forward, and so curious about each of the, and I've heard about five people, there may have been other people as well, but how many interviews that you did with each of the different candidates?
I'm not aware of five people. I'm aware of four people. And as you know, people come before, some people just, we put feelers out, I guess, on Facebook, we always put notifications out, all regularly regarding committee vacancies, and ask people to come forward. So you have a lot of appointments before you this evening, quite a few, and most of them have come in that way. I sometimes speak with them, sometimes I do not. In most cases, I take the recommendation, some say I was recommended by so-and-so, this is my background, that sort of thing. With regard to the Public Safety Committee meeting, I, or the Public Safety Commission, sorry, the important thing on the Public Safety Commission is that we get a full board working so that they can do the work of the Public Safety Commission. So the sooner we are able to fill all of the positions, the better. The two people that are before you tonight are certainly qualified people, and they will help add to the quality of the Public Safety Commission. And I know that David, both the Davids and Fred Clark, or Rick Clark, are anxious to get a full membership. With regard to the, with regard to Counselor Ricketts, who's put her name forward, and Jesus Leva, there's still most likely going to be opportunities to be put on the board. So, and I've certainly spoken to both Counselor Ricketts and to Jesus. With regard to Ms. Wesinger, we've had a phone conversation, at least one phone conversation with regard to what it is that she brings to the table, and I actually believe she's on the meeting tonight, as it is at Jarvis behind me here, and I'm sure if you wish to ask them to speak on their behalf, they would be happy to do it, or they can speak during public comment. But we definitely have talked about where the Public Safety Commission is at, and the importance of the work that it has before it. Once they are assembled as a full board, I know that David Moscaatolo and David Lenoi and Rick Clark do not want to be making major decisions as a board of three. They really want to have members on that board so that they can function as a full board. So that's what I have to say about it. But the process is, there's no one set process. I often reach, especially if I, if a name is not familiar to me, I do reach out and try to contact them. I will say that it is getting harder and harder to get people to step forward, and there's probably some there's probably some reasons for that, given the tenor of the times. So this city, in many ways, couldn't run without all of its volunteers. So it's really important that we fill our board, our board vacancies, and we try, every month, we work very hard on this. It basically falls to Caitlin.
Did you have follow-up, because I have some other questions out there, but go ahead.
Just quickly follow-up, I agree that it's important that we have a full board as quickly as possible, and my concern is that there be fair treatment of all applicants. And so I heard you say that you had a call with Carol Wesinger. Did you have, I'm curious how many interviews, what the process was with other applicants as well?
Well, I had an in-person meeting with, with Jesus, and I had a, at least one phone conversation with Counselor Ricketts, maybe two. Those are the two ways I prefer to communicate when I need to talk to people about, you know, their interest. I prefer to do it that way. Some people just want to email me.
Counselor Forghee, and then Counselor Bullock.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a simple question, I hope. This goes back to what you announced in regard to the municipal building funding authority.
Yeah.
Is, how do we say this now? Is there an expectation that when this is put in place, there would be retro money, or is it put in place going forward?
It's put in place going forward.
Thank you very much.
And by, I mean, I'm going to advocate for it a lot because I believe in it, but I by no means think that that gains Greenfield any cachet once that's funded, you know, let's say it passes, and, and we, you know, and who knows at this point? But I do it on behalf of a lot of our communities. There are so many communities out here, the smaller communities, and it's particularly related to their public safety buildings, their police and fire stations, and I'm talking about our small towns, hill towns. They're terribly inadequate. There's a report, and when I send you the legislative updates, I'll send you a link to a report that Suzanne Bump, the former auditor, did, very specifically on this topic, and very specifically focused on Western Massachusetts and how it gets shortchanged.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Bullock, and then Mayo.
Yeah, I'm, I'm back to the appointments, and I think it's important for us to talk about this a little bit with you, Mayor, especially as we have these appointments coming before us on the agenda. You know, I'm aware that there was a few other candidates for these appointments. I'm also wondering, what, what is it, that what's the rationale behind why you appointed these two current selections over Jesus? What's the sort of justification for that? Because my understanding is that his request to that came in in December or early January, and these requests didn't come in until the week of the 24th of January for the current appointment. So I'm really just concerned about how we're mitigating biases on this, on all appointments and ordinances as the chair, because I'll just share that in the meeting that Jesus set up between the chief of police and deputy Gordon, and myself and Derek Healy, both the deputy chief and the chief suggested that he apply for the Public Safety Commission. They knew that a vacancy was coming up. This is a citizen who's been extremely involved in trying to build goodwill between the police department and the community, and it seems like a real miss that he's not, that he's been looked over multiple times now, because you also had the two appointments in January. So there's now been four appointments that have come in since his application was put forth for you.
So I spent a lot of years on two committees. One of them was the planning board, and one of them was the school committee. The school committee, as you know, is an elected position, but the planning board is an appointed position. And what's important to me, when I now am able to appoint committee members, is that we have committee members who know how to work in a committee, that know how to deliberate in a committee, assert their interests, but then accept the will of the committee if it comes, whatever the issue is, comes to a vote. In my talks with Jesus, I said to him, very straightforward, this is not a no, but I would like for him to attend more safety, public safety committee meetings, and see how the committee reacts, works together. To my knowledge, it's his, it would be his first opportunity to be on a committee. That was part of my discussion with him, and I also wanted him to more fully understand that it's not just about the police department, the Public Safety Commission is about police, fire, dispatch, it's about our public safety entities. And, and I think we came to some agreement about that, about that time period. So that's all I can tell you. I mean, it's going to be up to you.
I can't hear you, Doug.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just, I have a concern about, again, it's been voiced here by some of the other councillors about how these council members, or not council members, but, you know, the Public Safety Commission is going to be designed, and how people are going to be chosen. I'm specifically concerned about David Moscatello, and also a city councilor member. I have a picture that says, defund the city council, which is not objective, and it doesn't sound to me like it's, these people are willing to hear both sides. They are willing to basically throw the city council under the bus for a decision that we had nothing, nothing to do with, other than, we did not defund, there was no, we did not take a vote on defunding, we took a vote on, on cutting the budget. There was no, the record shows, we didn't defund anything, but yet we show these two people who want to be on committee, standing in front of a sign that says, defund, defund the city council. I'm a little concerned that these two people want to be part of this committee, when in fact, they already have an agenda that is not in the interest of, of, of being conducive to working with other city groups, as, like, like the city council, like the administration, like the police department, like we're, the, the goal is that we, we work together, and by holding a sign that says, defund the city council, that, that suggests to me that these two people don't want to work together. Thank you.
Counselor Mayo, respectfully, this Public Safety Commission has nothing to do with the city council. Their role and responsibility is very well articulated within the charter. So, and David Moscatello and David Lenoir are already on the board, on the commission, and I've attended one meeting. It was a productive meeting with the three members, and they have another meeting next week. So I would encourage you to log in, or, or come, come to their meeting and watch them work.
Moving forward, once again, I'll ask, does anyone have any questions for the mayor? Counselor Toronto?
This is a little bit of an easier question. I couldn't see where you were clicking on the new website, but where the open government page was, was that under the how-do-I section?
It's linked to in a few different places. It's going to be right on the bottom of the homepage, like it is now.
Cool.
And it's also going to be in a few other spots.
I was just going to be, a suggestion was...
Easy to find.
Easy to find, right?
So, just so you know, that how-do-I, it's very popular in newer websites for cities, and basically, it's for the ease of the public to be able to go find out, how do I get a dog license? How do I get a birth certificate? So forth and so on. So that's, that's the reason for that, so.
I was just hoping there was a link to the open government, just...
Oh, sure.
That's all. Thanks.
Is there anyone else that has any questions for the mayor? Seeing none. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the presentation. We're going to move on to, I buried my notes, we're going to move on to public comment.
I'm actually going to speak about something different.
Jesus, sorry, could you just name and address for the record? Sorry.
Jesus Leva, 32 High Street. I'd like to thank Senator Commerford for sponsoring Bill SD 612, and our city administrators for supporting it. This is about the unreimbursed expenses for, sorry, going back here, for educational services for students in foster care. In 2018, former Mayor Martin petitioned the state for about $700,000 in those unreimbursed expenses. I actually am not, this might actually be a question for the mayor and Danny, does the, does this bill cover the expenses retroactively, or just going forward?
I think Counselor Forghee asked that question. No, was this the same person?
This is a different bill.
But I'm just thinking that we already went there, and it was future.
Yeah, I asked about the municipal funding bill, I did not ask about the other...
Yeah, this is a different one.
Point of order, councilors are not allowed to respond.
Okay, so the reason why this bill is really important is because this expense means something very different for Greenfield than it does for other communities. For example, and this is from the state auditor's report, and they specified in that report that they wanted to see the state assume full expense of providing educational services to student and foster care going forward. We paid $218,000 in 2018. Neighboring communities like North Hampton and Amherst, which are both wealthier and have more people, paid $9,500 respectively, and $15,000. So, big difference there. Gilmonaguas District paid $8,000. But to really drive home the disparity in this, out of the 16 districts listed in the auditor's report, we ended up in the top three payers, along with two major cities, Brockton and Boston. Brockton paid $292,000, which is a similar range to us, but they're a community with 100,000 people. So we outspent them per capita four to one. Same thing with Boston, although much worse. They paid $721,000 in these unreimbursed expenses for 2018, but they're well over 600,000 people, so per capita, we outspent Boston 12 to 1. So, you know, Greenfield is not large enough to be a gateway city for special grants, but we're too large to be considered for rural district, for a rural district school funding omnibus bill. We're only 18,000 people, but we're also the county seat, we have centralized services for our region with all the burdens that come with this. So this $700,000 is a tangible dollar amount that demonstrates how Greenfield falls through the cracks of the state's funding assumptions, and why city officials have to be aggressively advocating for any additional funding to Greenfield. Thank you.
Thanks, Jesus. We're now going to move to...
Could I speak as a public?
Not at this point, I'm still working on my list, and did you sign up?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
I didn't ask.
Yeah, I'm still doing public comment from people that signed up?
No. Okay.
Okay.
Can you sign up on the list? Let it sign up.
Yeah. I mean, if, for public comment, if that's what you're asking about, you can still sign up, because we're still just going through the list. Wendy, can you hear me? I don't know if anyone can hear me.
Wendy Goodman? Hi, thanks, Wendy Goodman, 529 Green River Road. I initially signed up just to say thank you to the council. I'm watching you on...
Wendy, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I don't know. Yes.
It's the delay.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, there's a slight delay, but we can hear you.
Oh, this is, oh, wait a minute, I've got to turn the phone off.
It's kind of like my other life, just turned on your radio.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello?
There we go.
We can hear you, Wendy.
Well, I'm going to speak, I'm going to say what I wanted to say, I don't know if you can hear me or not. I'm confused. So I really wanted to acknowledge how challenging this year has been, and to really thank everybody for their service. I'm hoping you can hear me. But then I was listening, and one of the things I'm hoping that we don't lose, because the room is not full, is what's going on, not just with our Public Safety Commission, but what actions are being taken to rethink how we are doing public safety, and what's happening with the chief, and what, what the chief and the mayor are looking to do to explore possibilities. The mayor was asked in the buzz in the afternoon if rethinking policing in Greenfield was a priority, and she never answered that question. I would like to pose that question again. I also left the book about What the Eyes Don't See, which was about the governor of Virginia, and how he reacted to the accusations of racism. I would like to see some behavior like that, Mayor, I hope you've read the book. And I want to acknowledge also Counselor Goleb for bringing that, this idea, making sure that we are addressing public, public safety, and thank you. Thank you for your service. I'm hoping that you all heard me. I'm going to turn that on and watch it on YouTube. Thank you again for your service. Mayor, I hope, I hope, I hope that we take action to at least show people that we are looking at the disparity in voice, and who has voice in this town. And I am concerned, I am delighted that Jesus applied to be on the Public Safety Commission. I'm concerned that you want only people that are already skilled and schooled in what you perceive is important, rather than that they have also the spirit and a voice that needs to be heard in the community. So please also think about us as building the future of Greenfield. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to recognize Doug Salwen next, but just for those of you that are watching, there is a delay that's built into this, so if you are listening to us, you're not going to hear me immediately like you are if you were here. So just realize there's a built-in delay. So just realize there's a built-in delay.
Hi, it says you're FCCPR host. I don't know how to change that name. So I'm Doug Selwyn, 38 Forest Avenue in Greenfield. And I want to talk a little bit about the budget. It is budget season again, and as usual, we don't have enough money. This is particularly true for education. I'm glad to hear that the superintendent said that negotiations are going well with teachers and other units, but they're more than a year beyond their last contract and structural assistants are also beyond their contract. And we have a lot of trouble, as people know, hiring and retaining folks in the district. So we're not bringing our students what they need, and we're losing students as a result and losing faculty. And it's a question because we are in an incredibly wealthy state, and there's plenty of money, but it doesn't seem to reach the schools, at least not in towns such as Greenfield. It's an outrage and it's a mystery. The state has, right now, I understand, an $8 billion rainy day fund. And despite what it looked like today, under very un-February skies, it's raining. So what do we do about this? Well, the Education Task Force of FCCPR is going to hold a forum on education funding on March 14th, and we would like to invite you all to come join us. It's a Zoom meeting. We'll share some basic information about how education funding works in the state, highlight some of the reasons that Greenfield in particular has been on the short end of funding, and then talk together about how we might address this going forward. So again, we're inviting city councilors and anybody listening to join with us on March 14th, which is Pi Day, by the way. So we are calling this Getting a Larger Piece of the Pie, the Education Pie. And we hope you will join us to work together, figure out both how to do better by the money we have in Greenfield, but recognize that the money we have in Greenfield isn't near enough to deal with the shortfalls that we've been dealing with for a very long time in education, and we can work together to do better than that. If you want more information about it, we'll certainly be putting more out between now and the forum, but you can also reach out to me and to Jesus Leva, who is also working on this. And I have to say that I would recommend him for any council you've got. He's a gem and we need him. But you can reach us at WMEDTaskForce@gmail.com. That's Western Mass, WMEDTaskForce@gmail.com for more information. We hope you will join us. We need all the best thinking we can have together to do well by our schools. So thank you.
Rachel Gordon?
Good evening, everybody. Hello, councilors. Rachel Gordon, I live in Precinct 2. Thank you for taking my comment, as always. I'd like to address a couple of issues on the agenda tonight. First is the COPS grant. I know you have to vote tonight on whether to accept the grant. I know you've been put in a position in which it might be hard to do anything but vote for it. I don't envy you that position. I just want to remind us all that the premise of this grant was a grant application in which our police department and mayor lied to the Department of Justice specifically about the actions and intentions of this council. They actively and purposely misrepresented you and mischaracterized the thoughtful engagement of many people in Greenfield on issues of police and specifically Chief Hague's misconduct in order to get money they wanted. And whatever you have to do tonight when you vote, I just want to point out that it's still not okay that that happened. The Department of Justice generally frowns on perjury, as should we. And I'm not suggesting that you all hold a grudge or do anything out of spite. Most of us know that's not a mature or healthy way to manage a city. I'll just ask you yet again to continue to use the tools at your disposal as a council to hold the chief and the mayor accountable for continuing to do things that are both unlawful and are really shockingly disrespectful of our entire community. Second, I want to ask you to press pause on the mayor's appointments to the Public Safety Commission. I really appreciate that A&amp;O voted against these appointments. They had really valid concerns about the lack of diversity of thought and background on the commission. Those concerns still stand. I think the mayor's answers to the questions tonight didn't shed any new light. So voting against them was the right thing to do. If that commission is loaded with people who will simply say yes to the mayor, it'll continue to fail to really represent and advocate for the diverse needs of our community. And it will continue to take a really narrow view of public safety that isn't actually making Greenfield safer. I know that the mayor wants full speed ahead, but I ask you to vote no on those appointments until there is some shred of acknowledgement, and in fact, more than just acknowledgement, but really an actual plan for a transparent process that is fair and equitable, that considers everyone who is interested in serving on this commission or any other, and really respects and reaches for a diversity of viewpoints. Thank you again for your thoughtful engagement on all of these issues and for your service. And I hope you all get to go home a little bit earlier tonight than you did last month. Thanks.
David?
David Moscaratolo, 43 Country Club Road. I did email Dan, I know he's quite busy, and I asked if I could have a few extra minutes, but that's okay, as the chair of the Public Safety Commission. But I'll speak as a, privately for my three minutes. I do want to clear up a misconception because I've heard it a few times about me. The word institutionalized is being said a lot from folks that really don't even know me, and I don't like to talk about myself, but I want to clear that up. I work for a private security company, and one of my jobs is to do gap analysis when a corporation or a government entity thinks they have an issue or thinks there's a problem. So I'm like a third person to go in and look at either a process or a procedure or a security situation. And most of the work I do is to secure people, the public, and their employees. So I don't work for a government agency. I don't work for a police department. I don't work for a fire department. I work for a private corporation, and that's my job. There's a lot to talk about, and we have a lot of work to do. I'm not going to address what Doug has said. That's a personal thing. If you want to ask me why I held my sign up, I will tell you, but I'm not going to waste my three minutes on that tonight, but I'll be more than happy to answer your questions on that. What's important is how we figure out how to move forward. I talked to the chief stray hand in Chief Hague, and I think the first thing that we have to address is how we handle public complaints. And it's either public complaints or public concerns. We have to make the process more open so everybody understands it. Right now, they both agree to discuss that, and they both agree that has to, there has to be changes to be made. And there's like a three-tier responsibility. They have their internal process. We, as the Public Safety Commission, have a process. It's not really clear to me right now what that process is if you read the charter, and that's a discussion that the Public Safety Commission has to have. And then there's the public involvement. This can't be a willy-nilly type of thing. We need a full commission. I'm not, I don't get involved with who's on the commission. I think the folks that are being talked to tonight are qualified, and I also think Jesus is qualified to be on the commission. The mayor has her reasons. I respect those. It's not my position to judge who's on the commission. It's my job to make sure the commission is running and they're productive. The commission is going to be, as the chair, I want it to be more than a two-hour-a-month commission. Has to be a lot more than that.
David, continue.
I apologize. Okay, thank you. The commission is, it can't be just a two-hour-a-month commission. We have to work together with you, the council. I'd like to know how you, all of you here, would like to communicate with us as the Public Safety Commission. Do you want it to be one-on-one? Do you want me to just give you an update? Do you want to come to our meetings? But we're going to have to eventually work together. Whether you like me as the chair or not, we're going to have to work together to solve some of these problems that we have. Some of you know me. John's known me, Jenny's known me. They know the type of guy I am.
Point of order.
Okay.
Is the three-minute rule being waived?
I'd waive it, yes.
Okay.
I welcome, if anybody knows me and knows what I do for a living, I welcome diversity. I welcome everybody's opinion. I welcome dialogue, but respectful dialogue. I hope that we can have respectful dialogue. But I welcome everybody. I listen. I've read what Jesus's concerns are. I've read what other people's sent me. I read everybody's email. If it's respectful and a person is concerned about it, I will read it. I might not agree. I've been trained to not make a decision or opinion unless I put thought into it. That's my job. My job is important, involves protecting people and their lives and their property. I'm not going to agree with everything. I'm not going to disagree with everything, but I'm going to really study it. Some folks have asked me, you have to get on board with this thing, and you got to get on board with this thing, and you got to get on this, on board with this thing. I won't get on board with anything until I fully understand it. And then I look at both sides of the picture and understand what people think. So it might be a little slower process, but that's how I think. I look forward to a full commission, whoever is on there, but we have a lot of work to do, and we have to tackle this issue about public complaints and so everybody understands what the process is going to be, so it's transparent. That's all I wanted to say. I appreciate the extra time.
Thank you, David. If I missed an email, that's why I granted you the extra time. So I apologize. And it was important that, with what's on the agenda today and some of the discussions, so thank you for coming. And in the future, as your commission gets its agenda, please look at the amended charter also when you're looking at your commission because we made some recommended amendment changes. You can get that from, is that on the website, the amended?
It is not, because it hasn't.
Right. If you want to check in with our city clerk, there was already some amendments to that commission. Make sure you look...
I want you to have to see those.
They could be, we don't know if they'll be accepted by the legislature, but they are already in the works, so please look at those. And then we can coordinate because there are some additional thoughts also that will be at A&amp;O. So just, we'll be working a lot with you. Whether we like you or you like us, we're stuck with each other for a while, so we'll be definitely working together, and we look forward to getting everything we can done.
I appreciate that, and I look forward to the dialogue, and I look forward to working with the full commission and having more voices. There's a lot of, when I visited the police department and I asked for their process and procedures, they had a book about two feet thick on their processes and procedures. That's a lot of processes and procedures. Are they all working? Are they all fear to the public? Are they all fear to the officers that are doing the job? I don't know. There's a lot of documentation that has to be gone through.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
All right, we are going to move on to public hearings and second readings. Let me just apologize to any of the community that tuned in for our Ways and Means meeting earlier this evening. Counselor Disorga was prepared to have a meeting on the topics that were on our agenda, and due to some technical errors, we were unable to get the Zoom meeting to connect, so we had to cancel that meeting. So for the council, when we get to those orders and resolutions that are financial, they will not have a recommendation from Ways and Means, but we will hear from Counselor Disorga. So I just want to, for those of you that weren't aware, what took place prior to us trying to come into the full council meeting. Counselor Disorga, public hearings and second readings, page seven.
Public hearing notice. In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, February 15, 2023, at 6:30 PM at the John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, and Zoom via the link. Meeting ID 94966981603 to receive public input on the following approved payment of, excuse me, Egan, Flanagan, and Cohen PC invoice of $10,507 from fiscal year 23 Town-City Attorney Services. Appropriate $100,000 from OPEB Stabilization to OPEB Trust. The city council may consider the same on Wednesday, February 15, 2023, at the John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, and Zoom.
I will open the public hearing at 7:35 PM. Is there anyone from the public, Zoom or in person, that wishes to talk on either one of these items? I don't have anyone signed up, but is there anyone here to speak with us? Seeing none, last call. I will close the public hearing at 7:36 PM, and I'll ask Counselor Disorga to do the second reading on those.
Second, city council's second reading, February 15, 2023. Approved payment of Egan, Flanagan, and Cohen PC invoice of $10,507 from fiscal year 23 Town-City Attorney Services. Appropriate $100,000 from OPEB Stabilization to OPEB Trust.
Thank you. We're going to move on to motion orders and resolutions. It seems a little bit like Groundhog Day at the moment, but Counselor Disorga?
Order number, fiscal order 23-094. The city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedegartner, in order to approve payment of a prior year invoice in the amount of $10,507. Ordered that the Greenfield City Council approve the payment of a prior year invoice for Egan, Flanagan, and Cohen PC in the amount of $10,507 to be paid from the fiscal year 23 Town-City Attorney Services, account number 0100.151.5302. The available budget in Town Attorney Services is currently $31,992.94. Two-thirds vote required. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Counselor Disorga, I know you don't have a committee. Do you have any information that you'd like to share before we have discussion?
There was no committee meeting on this, so there's no committee report. There was information given to us, supporting information, and I, for myself, would be voting and encourage others to vote in favor of this.
All right. Is there any discussion from any of the other council on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion carries. Counselor Disorga?
Order number, fiscal year 23-095. The city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedegartner, in order to appropriate $100,000 from OPEB Stabilization. Ordered that the sum of $100,000 be transferred from Fund 8406, OPEB Stabilization, to the OPEB Trust. Two-thirds vote required. Forgé?
Motion's been made and seconded. Once again, we know there was no vote. Anything supporting explanation, anything, Counselor Disorga?
Just supporting the Fund 8406, OPEB Stabilization balance is $237, $229.86. We have done this in the past, and there was a very good explanation of this from Diana Schindler, our new director of finance, and I personally am in favor of this, and I would encourage others to vote for this transfer.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Counselor Lapienski?
Just for the public watching here and at home who have no idea what we're talking about, in the supporting documentation, it states... about, in the supporting documentation, it states that OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. And am I correct, Counselor Disorga, that that is one of the accounts for essentially pension benefits, retirement for city employees? No. We have the finance director here.
We sure do.
Because we have a finance director that lives in Massachusetts.
One of them lives in Rayville.
Thank you, Dana.
So, OPEB is actually Other Post-Employment Benefits, so it is post-employment, but it's actually for health insurance, not for retirement or pension benefits.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. Counselor Disorga, page 13?
Order number FY23-097. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedegartner, in order to accept fiscal year 2022 COPs Hiring Program Grant Funds. Ordered that the mayor is authorized to accept and expend federal funds received from the fiscal year 22 COPs Hiring Program, CHP, as part of a multi-year reimbursement grant from the federal government via the U.S. Department of Treasury. These funds will be used in accordance with grant policy to advance the practice of community policing through the hire or rehire of additional career law enforcement officers. Majority vote required.
Thank you, Counselor Disorga. At chairs meeting.
Second.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Second in a couple places. Who was that? Counselor Forji? Okay, thank you. Thank you, we jumped the gun. At chairs, we sent this directly to the floor. It was not going to be on the agenda this evening at Ways and Means, so we could discuss it in its entirety here. I guess before I open the floor to discussion, I just want to clarify one point. If you look at this motion, we are not accepting this grant. This grant has already been accepted by the mayor. We're accepting the funds and expensing the funds, because that's our portion of the grant. So if you look at this motion, it's not a financial order, which Counselor Disorga and I had a discussion about a little while ago, but it is the funding, not the acceptance of the grant. As Counselor Disorga, I think, pointed out last meeting, the mayor signed off on this grant sometime in December or, you know, previously, so the grant has been accepted. It's the funds allocation. I'm going to open the meeting. Counselor Disorga, being Ways and Means, would you like to clarify those points?
I would, I'm sorry that Director Schindler moved back. Already, I'd like, if I had a question for you, if you wouldn't mind to come forward again with the permission of the president, is that okay?
Sure. I just, because Ways and Means got cut out of the, I would just want you to finish up with that. Yep, please.
You'll be getting your exercise tonight. Thank you so much. And I had asked a couple of questions about this, but my, one question on this is for you, normally, we don't get an order for accepting, we don't get an order for accepting a grant. Is there any special reason why this is on tonight? And when might we anticipate getting a financial order? That's all.
Sure. So I think we had mentioned this at last month's meeting. The grant itself does not require the legislative body to accept. That is generally the case with these grants. However, because it's a multi-year funding commitment or spending commitment, you know, we felt that it's fiscally prudent for the council to accept it, because you're basically committing to funding beyond this fiscal year. So, so there's no financial order needed, but because it's committing multi-year funds, we're asking the council to accept it.
Follow-up?
Of course. And then Counselor Forji.
Do you have, do you have an idea of when we'll be getting a financial order and an idea of the figure that we're talking about?
The grant is for, we already had discussed it, I believe it's $375,000. So once we start, once we hire the officers, we can put in to get reimbursement from the grant. But I'm not sure what financial order would be needed.
What would be the source of the funding, then?
Well, we have, we have the appropriation, I mean, we have, we have the funding. We talked about this last time. We have the matching funds, and the mayor's committed some ARPA as well, but we have the money in the budget to hire at this time, and then we would expect a reimbursement from the grant.
In the future, wouldn't that money be in the budget?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, not now, but in future budgets, that line would show up there, just to reiterate. Counselor Forji?
This is a little bit redundant, so I apologize. Is there any reason why there is not a number mentioned in this grant, in this, in this, in this motion?
No, there was no, there was no particular reason, just because the grant materials were provided and that had the information in it. So there's no reason in particular why the amount isn't in the order.
All right, I'm a little bit confused, so please help me understand. The grant is in, or the authority for the grant is in, $375,000, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We are voting to only accept the grant, we are doing nothing with the funds?
Correct. By accepting the grant, you're authorizing us to move forward with the grant objectives, which is to hire the three officers, and then to submit to the grant for the reimbursement for that, which we discussed last month, and you had that spreadsheet that I had provided that showed the breakdown of that over the next, the coming fiscal years.
Okay, thank you.
If someone can clarify for me, isn't there a portion, and I need my Ways and Means people, isn't there a portion that says in any multi-year contract involving revenue has to come before the city council with multi-year contracts? Isn't there a portion of our?
I always thought so, that that was a past practice, so I guess that's why I'm a little confused.
I'm thinking that's why we have this before us, because it's, we're entering into a multi-year commitment on finances, even though it's reimbursed through a grant, it still needs our authority to authorize the funding. So that's why I'm just, because I know, we have a piece in our, there's, there's some, there's something we've always had to do with funding. This, it's not a contract, okay. I was talking contract language. This is really good, that contracts that are three years, we, more than three years, we have to have approval on this floor, but this isn't a contract, it's a grant. So I was, I was thinking that clarity would come, but I'm talking in the wrong lane. We have some other questions. Counselor Forji, did you have follow-up, or do you want to move on, and then we can come back, or? And remember, Counselor Mayo, any questions about the financial portion?
Yeah, I do. If I may, Mr. President, when does this, when does this money start? I mean, when do we start this fiscal year to start hiring officers?
Yes, it is the intention to start hiring immediately.
Then, it strikes me as a little bit, I mean, I'm glad that we have the opportunity to get the officers, but I'm a little concerned that we're putting the horse before the cart a little bit with the, with the, you know, commission that we were talking about prior, and filling it with people who are, are going to be working for public services and a public service committed, commission. And we haven't quite got that in place yet, and, and we're, we're going to have three officers in place fairly soon without, without that system in place. Or even like a review of what the commission or the work that needs to be done. You know, I just have, I just have to voice that concern. Thank you.
Counselor Lapienski?
So, I am a little bit confused as to exactly what we're doing, so forgive me if anything is a duplicate of any of the previous counselors' questions. So I, what, the order before us, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not really an order, it's more like a straw poll, just to see how we feel about the grant?
No, it's actually a vote. We would like to have a vote on record of the council that you are making a commitment to accept a multi-year grant that is going to require multi-year funding from the council, whether it's this council or a future council, the commitment must stand, or the grant would, we would be in jeopardy of having to repay the grant. So that's, that's why we need to have a vote on the record.
So, right, but the vote that we're taking tonight is not an obligation. You could accept the grant and spend the money without talking to us, or even if we voted no. It wouldn't be prudent, but theoretically, it's not dependent on us. Is that correct?
I would say, as I mentioned before, I don't believe it's fiscally responsible to commit the town to a multi-year grant if the council doesn't, doesn't also agree and make that vote. It would be very difficult in the future years to expect a future council to abide by, by that commitment, I believe, without a vote.
And what is that commitment?
It's to keep the officers on that you hire for 48 months past each of their hiring dates. So you, you get the grant for three years, and then you have to keep them on for an additional year. So it literally happened, it's 48 months from the hire date of the officers.
Forty-eight months is four years. What is the dollar amount of the commitment that you're asking us to make?
I don't have the exact amount, because we don't have the future budget years, but I did, when I created this spreadsheet, I gave you a, an estimate or a projected amount. So that is, that's contained in that, but over the three years, the city would spend $622,970, that's an estimate, and the grant would cover $375,000 of that.
So what is the portion that you would be asking us to fund?
So you have to, so each year, there's a declining amount that the grant will provide, so the city has to step up and pay an additional 25%, but then you'll also have to pay any difference beyond the one, you know, the 125 per year over the 375. So if the officer's wages were higher than, you know, the 375 isn't going to get you all the way there, basically.
Right. So what is the difference between the 375 and all the way there?
Well, as I said, I don't know.
And forgive me, I'm asking because if I vote for this, I'm essentially voting to spend money that the taxpayers have paid into the system, and I would like to know how much of the taxpayer's money I'm voting to spend.
Sure. I understand your question. I am saying that I don't have an exact total, because there are many, you know, different timing issues as far as the hiring goes, what the salaries might be, contract negotiations will occur between now and then, so I can't really with absolute certainty tell you. It's just going, like I said, I gave you a projection sort of based on, on my best guess.
You said the projection was what, 622?
622.
Less 375?
Right. And again, that is not taking, that's, you know, again, it's a very much a projection.
And it's, it's a bit hypothetical in some ways, because we don't have an end, we have a beginning, but.
I have to admit, I have serious concerns about voting for an unspecified amount of money. It just, it just seems irresponsible.
Well, I would just say, for the record, you're just voting to accept a specified amount of money of $375,000 to pay for police officers that you all spent last month that you actually need to have, so.
Counselor Bullock?
Yeah. So I just want to name that when we initially had this conversation, this isn't directed at you, even though you're sitting there, that when we initially had this conversation, my concern about this grant was that it wasn't $175,000 that we were going to be matching, which is what everyone kept saying, that like that was the number that was thrown around. But because there is these extra pieces, right, there's, there's things that change over three years within contracts, there's pay rate, merit raises, there's COLAs, there's overtime, there's different stipends, there's holiday pay, there's incentive pay, we don't, we can't exactly project what this number is going to be. So I just want to name for the council that if we accept this grant, and if we, you know, if we, if we accept this motion put before us, even though it's not a fiscal order, we are giving our word that we are willing to increase the police budget this fiscal year and the next subsequent three fiscal years following, because that's what happens when you hire more people, is that you, your budgets increase over years, because we have to give people merit increases, or, we should, give people merit increases, and we have to give people COLAs. And there's other, other contract negotiations that are going to go forward. I am going to just say, I'm really torn about this. I think that this is great, right? This is what our schools go and do. They go and fundraise, they find grants, they raise the money they need to fill the gap, right? This, that's what our police department did, and it's what we should be doing. If there's federal dollars out there to offset municipal dollars, that's what should happen. What I'm concerned about is that we're nine months down the line from when we took this vote. Many of my fellow counselors voted to cut the, when we took the vote, to decrease the budget by the $425,000. Many of my fellow counselors decided to make that vote based on the fact that there needed to be some level of accountability that we wanted change. There was many reasons that were put out on the council floor. I think since then, things have shifted and changed within our city, and I don't think that we've actually seen anything concrete shift and change. I think there's been many attempts towards accountability within the police department, and really, all we've seen in reaction is punitive, and like punitive actions towards the council from the police department because of those things. So I just want to say, like, we're nine months from a vote where we, we didn't pass a budget because of what was going on with our city in regards to racism and lack of accountability with the police department. I think that Chief Hague was reinstated in September. I'm not totally positive, I think it was September. So we're six months from when our chief of police has been back at the head of our police department, and there is literally a list of changes that could, like, like David said, from the Public Safety Commission, that there's all of these things that could be implemented. The policy book is this thick. When I sat in the meeting with Chief Hague and Deputy Gordon, they told me, here's the policy card, you know? Policy and practice are two different things. These are things that actively could have been shown to us as a city council or being worked on. So I am concerned if we vote this forward, one, One, we're locked into increasing a police budget for the next four years. Two, we have not seen any shift yet. When does that happen? Like, that's what I actually wanna know, is when are we going to have there be a plan to investigate allegations of violence and misconduct by officers within the Greenfield Police Department? When are they gonna come before us and say, listen, we realize that black people are disproportionately pulled over in the city of Greenfield, and here's our new policy that's gonna be put in place to mitigate that reality? We, we haven't seen anything. So it's really hard to commit to appropriating more funds for the next four years.
Counselor Toronto?
Um, yeah, there's, there's just a couple of things. We also, in this, because the grant only covers the first three, we're also being, we're also gonna be committing to the full cost for the fourth year, correct? Yeah. Um, and is that included in that estimate, the 622, or is that only for the first three?
No, it actually shows, again, it sort of depends on the hiring of when the, when the officers are hired, but, um, it does show that it actually doesn't even go entire, because the amount isn't, um, the, the application had been for a higher amount, but basically they reduced it and, and not to any rationale per se. So it doesn't, it won't maybe even cover in total that third year, um, you know, the grant will be less than that 125 in that last year.
Right.
So, but I, I would emphasize again, these are costs that, I mean, not, you know, I hear what you're saying, but these are costs that we presume that we will have in our budget regardless.
Right. Um, so I guess that's, part of the, part of my concern is even though we're not voting on a multi-year contract, as is, as has been stated, um, we're committing for future councils as well, that, as, as Counselor Bullock was saying, we are going to, for, for whatever reason could be decided, um, if, if there was a, a cut that needed to be made, I, I feel like we're, we're almost locking ourselves into taking whatever the salary budget is put forward, um, and just having to rubber stamp that for four years in order to not default on this grant. It's not a loan per se, well, it is kind of a loan, even though it's not a contract, it's still kind of a contract, because if we don't adhere to everything for the next 48 months, we gotta pay it back. So whatever the, the, the language that's used on the way that the funding comes about, it's still an obligating contract that we're making. And I can see where there can be some, some conflict in, in that. My other concern was even though we didn't sign it, um, I'd asked this two months ago, um, or month and a half, whenever it was, in hopes that we would get this kind of answer on what, on a legal opinion on our, um, as I said, though we didn't sign the contract, if this were, and I'm not trying to make a huge thing out of this either, but what the, the, as it's been said, um, if what was written on the contract for the purpose of the application, or on the application itself, uh, which sounded disingenuous to, I think, most of us, um, if that wording would put anybody at risk. Um, I, I don't, I would like to say I don't think so. However, that's why I asked for kind of a legal opinion on that, is hearing somebody say, oh, well, we use the word defund, but anything that you cut from a budget is technically defunding, that doesn't do it for me, because that, where is that defined? Um, and I haven't gotten that, anything from legal.
Can I just make some comments on the legal piece?
Sorry, yeah.
Um, after that meeting, I submitted two things, um, to legal, request for legal. One was a Counselor Gollub asked about, um, violation of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Is that correct? Is that the right number? Um, I sent that, um, to the mayor, also with the question of the definition of defund. We sent the civil rights question to our attorney. That went out to Counselor, uh, that went out to Attorney Quinn, and he sent back, and you received that piece around June 24th, with a full explanation of how we weren't in violation of that civil rights piece. And when we asked about the, um, word defund, defund is, is defined simply by any, this is what was told, um, defund, the word defund is used in the dictionary term, which means to, um, it, it was spelled out to me when I asked the question, to defund is to decrease, or, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty definite what the Merriams and the others for the word defund, and that was the word that was used, so it should cause no objection, because that's the universal term being used for cutbacks or defunding in any department in a municipality. So those were the two things. But we did get legal, full legal opinion on the question, uh, the, the longer question, and not on the shorter, because it, uh, did not require a legal, um, definition.
Well, my, I only said my, because my question didn't have anything to do with whether we were in compliance with the Civil Rights Act. It was whether or not we were falsifying information on a grant application. That was, that was, those are two separate things, but if it's.
Well, I didn't know if there was specifics on the grant application that I missed that you were worried about, that we were falsifying, because those are the ones I tried to send in, the ones that were brought up on the floor specifically. Um, I, I made note with a clerk that we tried to get those to attorneys, and those were the two that were, uh, that had definitions as legal. And I asked that the application, um, be read, and I believe there was language from the attorney about the language within the application, saying that he found no, um, I, Counselor Bullock, can you help me on this? I'm only because.
Yeah, so basically, the important piece of what he responded in relation to that question was, in conclusion, there's no legal bar to Greenfield receiving the award grant money. Nevertheless, during the award period, it's critical that Greenfield comply with all anti-discrimination laws, including the diversity and training requirements referenced in the application documents. While the past jury verdict does not preclude Greenfield from receipt of the funds, a future violation during the award period could result in liability, which may include termination of the award and/or a requirement to repay award funds. So this actually concerns me in that we are appealing, and we could have another, another verdict during this period.
But it does.
It's a question. It's a question. And it doesn't, I don't think it answers, uh, the question about defund that Counselor Toronto is asking, but there was actually other things within that grant that were questionably written, um, that I think are concerning in, in regards to being truthful with the Department of Justice.
Right. And, and that, I was trying to address those, so that was, um, on the other hand, in, in addition to those, um, we're not accepting the grant. The grant was accepted already. We are, um, accepting responsibility for the funding. Did you have information to share?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. This is a discussion, and if you have information, that'll help my counsel.
This occurred to me sitting back there. So I used to write grants as well, and I've written actually Department of Justice grants for child-serving agencies. And so actually, alternatively, I would say that codifying this grant by the council, it's really tough, because it is four years, and we don't know, it, this may not be the same people in four years. These are, these are grants created for communities and municipalities who run on an annual budget cycle, so I'm sure other communities wrestle with this. But to Counselor Bullock's comment, I actually think that by codifying this and having the council accept it, and then moving forward with the Department of Justice grant, we have another set of, um, criteria that Greenfield will have to be beholden to, the Department of Justice, to uphold those very things that you just read off, in terms of making sure that there aren't further violations, because we would possibly have to return the money. So, you know, that is not, not without, you know, that's something that just occurred to me, listening to this conversation. So, and I've read the grant a few, a couple of times now.
Counselor Gilmore?
So whenever we get a legal opinion from, you know, the mayor's attorney, we're going to get the opinion that the mayor's attorney wants us to have. I work with lawyers all the time, some of the union rep, and we have a lawyer that we're paying right now to make the argument that we want him to make, and management's lawyer is making the argument that they want them to make. So I don't take it, uh, at face value, that the legal defund definition is what we're talking about here. I mean, it's like the definition of is-is argument from when I was in high school. We were looking at a bloated police budget in March and April of last year, when we were really starting to look at the, at the budget. Before the jury even said anything about Chief Hague, and before all this was in the newspaper, we were already having those conversations at Ways and Means. We were already looking at cutting a very bloated budget. And if we're gonna use that definition, we have defunded GSET, we have defunded the DPW, we've defunded our schools. But there is a separate definition, there is a defund movement out there, and there are people who are very, very far to the left, who are very reactionary, who are saying, we should give $0.00 to the police because we don't like police, because, yeah, yeah. That's not what we did. We came together, we made rational arguments, and like I said, we were talking about these cuts before. I was going to all the Ways and Means meetings, because I had to help people log into Zoom. So I'm not gonna sign anything that says defund, because that's not what happened. It's a mischaracterization. And I don't appreciate us as a body accepting that the definition in Merriam-Webster of defund means that we removed some money. That's, I mean, that's not what this grant application was for. It was not the spirit of the application. And what they wrote on that application flies right in the face of it.
All right. Let me just go over a little bit of procedure. Everyone gets to speak once, then after everyone has spoken once, I will recognize people the second time. So if you've spoken once, um, I am writing down when you raise your hand, but if you've already spoken on this, we're gonna hear everyone else first, and then I'll go back. Counselor Bottomley?
Yeah, I just had a question. I'm still not entirely sure why we have to vote on this. And if it was so essential that we vote on it, why wouldn't you come to us when you were accepting the grant? Because you already accepted it. So it feels, it just feels a little disingenuous coming this many months later, when we could have had this discussion together, as opposed to it was accepted, and now we're talking about it. And then I have a question about, can we bind future councils? I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't seem right. I, I mean, it feels like, I, I, that's why I'm not sure what we're accepting.
We can accept lots of financial responsibility that goes beyond our term. I mean, if you wanna call it binding, but there are many things that we'll vote on this year, and we're all, there's like six of us off in November. We're, we're not giving that to the next council. It's, that's just how, this budget, the, the majority of us that vote on this budget won't be here when we pay those bills. So I mean, it's not, it, it, it's very common that that's what we do. I'm just saying on.
The point of information?
Yeah.
We wouldn't be binding future councils, but future councils would have to weigh the costs and benefits, because the money would have to be paid back. And we've had that discussion about the Green River Schools.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we, you know, there's, there's bills that we commit to for long-term, and we're committing counselors to look at it in the future, the same, in the same way.
I guess my point is, either way, whether we vote for it or not, it's accepted, so the future council will have to deal with that either way. So you're just looking for a, a message of support from the council? Because I don't see a financial order. We're not talking about specific dollars.
So the, they've accepted it, but they haven't spent any of the money yet? So.
Yeah, let's, let's just, um, Counselor Bottomley, did you have any specific questions that I can get answered for you from?
No, it's just very confusing.
No, no, I, I understand that piece. I just wanna make sure that we're, who hasn't spoken on this that would like to? Counselor, um, Gollub and then Elmer?
I'll try to keep this brief, because my mind has been spoken by several other counselors. But a couple of questions. One is, what happens if we do not authorize? If we voted no on this, what would happen?
I think the mayor, it, then the mayor will have a decision to make about whether she wants to proceed with the grant, because as, as I mentioned at the outset of this, it's not, and, and Counselor Bottomley is correct, it's not a requirement per se that the legislative body accept a grant. That would be like if you had a town meeting and you went to town meeting to accept a grant. It's not required. Um, as I, as the finance, I can't speak for the former finance director, but I know in speaking with her, that she also felt it was the appropriate thing to bring it to the council, um, for a vote, and I feel the same way, um, because as I said, I do think it's fiscally prudent, so the community knows that the council has had this discussion and, and made a commitment. Whether it's binding on a future council, it, it may well not be. A future council could take a different vote, but you would have to deal with the ramifications of the grant at that point, whether it's, um, like, like somebody said, either it ends or it has to be repaid. So it seemed to be, um, you know, the most, uh, it just, just the, the best practice to have this vote on the record.
Okay. And she, just to follow up with that, she could still accept these funds, even without us going forward with voting for this?
I would say that we can, we can proceed.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, and I, I just, I don't feel ready to, the information that is written, as I understood it, in this short paragraph, doesn't lay out the detail of what the commitments are, and I'm concerned about the legal liability that others have mentioned, and also what the fiscal commitment is. And so I don't, I would like to see that in more detail before making this decision. Like, I'm just trying to write down these numbers, 622,000. I, I, yeah, I feel like I need more information before we have to put on this.
I just, to, just to know, I, when I, I did present a spreadsheet at the last meeting, I think I, I feel like I put it in the council shared folder too. Um, and on the second tab, it has those numbers that, that you're mentioning, just in a, in a breakdown as, as best as I could in terms of a projection. So it is all detailed on that second tab.
Thank you. All right. Counselor Elmer? Because you haven't spoken yet.
Um, I don't have a question. I just wanna, uh, remind people that, uh, last meeting, we were talking about a, a hole in the police coverage of policing of Greenfield. And they came up with a solution that came very close to closing that hole, and part of it was that they had applied for and received this federal grant. So I, I share the concern that the problems that were raised have not been addressed, and that, uh, that there's, you know, that this grant was accepted before we knew anything about it. But we're not a rich community. We can't just throw away $375,000 willy-nilly. Uh, and this did serve a purpose to close a hole, and, uh, I'm inclined to vote for it despite all those concerns. Thank you.
Counselor Forgie, now we're going back to any second comments.
Thank you. I'm going, I am going to agree with Counselor Elmer. I am in favor of funding this. When you, uh, when you secure a grant like this, all the effort that goes into securing the grant, um, it is a good faith effort to help solve a problem, and it will fill a gap. It's necessary for us, uh, to try to be problem solvers in accepting the, uh, the hard, cold facts that we need this money in order to put free police back into, uh, the police department budget. budget. Five, and I think there's going to be another one, I'm not sure, I've heard both ways, five or six people have left or will be leaving the police department. And this would pay for part of those positions to be funded. And yes, the town is going to have to step up to the plate and fund, and I get that. Also, please understand that you'll be funding, for the most part, at the lowest rate possible, unless you get a well-qualified officer or candidate from another city. The other really important thing to, that I am not throwing money around, and I am not being irresponsible or anything else, but at this point, I think it would be counterproductive if we did not go ahead and approve this and fund, you know, and accept this grant. Public safety is, is, this is people's lives. This is their safety that's really at risk at this point. So, I'm going to go out on a limb and say, "I'm accepting this grant," because I want to see it put towards better protection for all of our citizens in Greenfield. And I do think that we will be able to move forward with the Public Safety Commission in place. I wanted to mention one more thing about Public Safety Commission. Maybe this will help some of the counselors. The Public Safety Commission is just that, it was set up under charter as a commission. A commission is different than a committee. And it was done this way on purpose. A commission has the authority to subpoena, investigate, and make legal findings. There is a law that protects them, and they are known as special municipal employees under that law. I believe that we get this commission, and it put in place, and start working with these people. What that means for us is going to be a better product. A lot of people have left. Now, we're bringing in new people. We're going to be doing new training. And some of the low-hanging fruit that was mentioned in that great big, you know, six-story-high procedural book, that needs to be gone through. Maybe it needs to be shredded. Maybe we need to start all over again. But the bottom line is, the people of this city deserve to be safe. And if this puts $1 towards their safety, I'm willing to go out on a limb and make that commitment to the people of Greenfield for the, not only today, but for the future. That's what I'm, I'm looking for, and that's what I will be doing. So, I will be voting yes. Thank you very much.
Counselor DeSorger?
I, I just, I agree with Counselor Forgé. I think it would be fiscally unwise not to be voting in favor of this. And I, I think one of the things people said, we actually, we'll, we'll be decreasing this budget. We're accepting $375,000 over the next four years. And we're putting in the share for actually a quarter of that. So, I thought it was going to be 170,000, but with benefits, and I understand that. We're getting three officers paid for, for three years, and we're paying for one year, and agreeing to, to keep the, the, it, one year beyond the forty, one year beyond 48 months, I think. So, I think we need to keep people safe. We've lost five or six people, and this would be replacing three, with us paying for basically somewhere between a quarter and a third of that. So, fiscally, I think it makes sense. And I do think that the people in the city want protection around the clock.
I'm going to recognize Counselor Ricketts, who didn't speak yet, and then Counselor Gilmore.
Okay, thank you.
And then Doug.
So, when the budget time came around, and the council cut the budget, they were trying to cut it by specific people, because they didn't understand their roles, and that we couldn't do that. We couldn't take salaries of just certain people. It doesn't work that way. It was just lots of new people not understanding how we do it. So, we actually did cut a budget. So, we actually did, in fact, defund some of that police budget, no matter how you look at it. That's, that's what happened. I know what the intention was, but it's not how it worked out. And we heard back from the public immediately, and they were not happy. And when they made the decision that they might cut some of the shifts a month or two ago, the public spoke again. And they spoke quickly, and they spoke loudly. Of course, I'm voting for this, because I'm, was elected by the people. And that's who matters. And when, no matter what votes we have taken, they have come right back to us and told us how they felt. And so, I'm voting for what I believe is the majority of the people, what they want. It's not a minority group, or it's not the people who are in this one group, who have come the last three years or four years in a row, the same people, and wanted us to cut, time and time and time again. I'm talking about the majority of this city. So, I'm voting yes. I'm voting for my family, and I'm voting for safety.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yeah, I still have some concerns about the financial part of this. So, Counselor Forgé had mentioned the plan that came up last month, where there's going to be a gap in coverage, except, we didn't have the information ahead of time, so I had to go home and do the math. But we're going to spend extra money to have officers working on average fewer hours. They're going to get the $600 stipend every two weeks. And instead of an average of 37 1/3 hours, they're going to be working 35 hours. Except, this was pitched to us as a way to deal with this financial crisis. Except, that's, that's not solving any kind of financial crisis. So, these stories keep taking these twists and turns, where it starts off being about money, and then now it's not money, and we're going to just throw more money at the problem. I think what I'm really concerned about, when we talk about moving this forward, and how the funds are going to have to be allocated by future councils, are we going to have any good way of tracking these wages? Not just like how much they say it's going to cost to fill a position, but the actual paid wages? What comes out in payroll with, with, I think I'm describing this improperly. If you put in your budget that you want an employee who's going to be making $65,000 a year, and then there's, you know, obviously, benefits and things that are calculated in, if that person actually doesn't end up making $65,000 a year, they're only actually paid $53,000 a year, we don't see that at the end. We just know that there was a position that was funded at a certain level. And I don't feel like we have any good way of tracking how those things move through the process. We're talking about this being four positions, and we went back and forth about how they're positions and not people. So, if a person leaves, or gets promoted, and a new person takes that position, the funding should drop at some point. Are you following? I, I feel like this, I, I feel like I would want a bar graph in front of me here. I don't feel like we have a good way of tracking that. I don't feel like we get this sort of detailed granular information when we're looking at our budget at Ways and Means. We get a pie chart with like an orange piece, and a blue piece, and a green piece, and we're supposed to just vote, you know, millions of dollars for it. That's my biggest concern with this.
Director, can you shed any light from your seat?
Sure. Yeah. So, as far as the, this detail, this will be, we'll be required to track this, because we'll have to submit grant reports, so, and for the reimbursements. So, this will be, this will be tracked in a granular way. I also want to mention that the grant only funds officers at the, at the starting step, at step one. So, they'll be, so that's what we're funding throughout that period, where, once we hire that officer, we're funding that position at step one for that period of time. And then, I mean, as it starts, and then as it goes through the, you know, then it could go to step two, to step three, in the three years. But they all, the starting has to be at step one. And so, and as far as tracking that, we will track that, just like we do all of our other budgets.
Right. So, starting at step one-
Mm-hmm.
I understand that that's, the grant is not to bring people back, it's to, to bring in new folks. I understood that. If you have a person who starts off at step one, and they work for us for two years, and decide that they're going to go work elsewhere, maybe they want to move out of state, or whatever, and you've got another person who comes in, they're going to start off at step one. So, that wage would be dropped. Because it's not the person, it's the position.
Mm-hmm.
So, that position would be filled again at a step one. And I'm concerned about us being able to keep track of where that money is going to go. Because we haven't been getting this granular data when we look at the budget during Ways and Means.
Well, I, I believe that we will have to track it, because we'll have to supply that to the grant for the reporting and for the reimbursements.
So, is that information that we're going to be able to get during deliberations for Ways and Means?
As far as, when, when would that be? What do you mean, for?
I mean, so, I'm, I'm, many of my colleagues are on there last year. I have a long time I have to sit here. So, I feel like I'm going to be looking at this probably next year and the year after. Am I going to have that? Or, I mean, I feel like-
Yes, yes.
We're pulling teeth, you know?
When we do the grant-
Like Chinese water torture.
Jeez, wow.
That's the reason she left the state.
No. So, I, I think that as we report to the grant, I believe it's quarterly, we can provide those reports, copies of those reports. I don't see any issues with that.
And that's, that's what you do. I mean, that's just part of the process for a grant, and you, in the position that you're in.
Correct.
Counselor Mayo?
It seems to me like people are forgetting, you know, what, what those people came and testified for, over, you know, a field, a field John Zahn Center for, for three or four months, as well as protests on Main Street and, and more than Main Street, that they wanted their, not only their, their protection from, from the police department, and they didn't want the funding of the police department, they wanted protection from it, and they wanted their civil rights protected. That's, that's the duty of the city as well. And that's what they were fighting for. So, we have a duty and a responsibility to make sure that that is protected, that is protected as well. And I don't think that, I, I, I fully agree with, with the statements of Counselor Gilmore, that, you know, when you, when you get a, a yes statement from the, the, the mayor's lawyer, you, you get exactly what the mayor wants. So, I don't believe that their, their interpretation of "defund" is correct. There was a movement of the funding, just like Counselor Gilmore had said. So, that's what, I think that was the intent, not the actual wording of, of, of the definition "defund." Thank you.
Sure. There's a, there's a motion on the table. It's non-debatable. Roll call? This is calling the question.
Pass.
Counselor DeSorger?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Lapinski?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Vice President Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Toranzo?
Yes.
Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, no.
By majority, the motion to call the question passes.
All right. Would the clerk like to remind us the vote that's on the table?
It's order number 097, in order to accept the FY22 COPS Hiring Program Grant Funds. Would you like me to read the entire order?
No.
Thank you.
Roll call vote? Majority required?
Seven required.
Majority. Counselor Golub?
I'm going to pass.
Counselor DeSorger?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Bullock?
Obsteing.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes, reluctantly.
Counselor Lapinski?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Vice President Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Toranzo?
Yes.
Counselor Golub?
I'm abstaining.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, yes.
The motion passes by majority.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, it's time.
Thank you, Director.
That's a good point.
Point of order.
Point of order, it's-
I've been waiting for this moment.
It is, it is break time. I'm going to call a, it will come back with appointments and ordinances, a five-minute recess. I'd like to call the meeting back to order.
8:46 PM.
8:46 PM. And I put her on alert before we went out. So, now, we'll go to A&amp;O and Counselor Bullock.
Yes. So, we are starting with the mayor's appointment to the Council on Aging, Margot Townley.
So, you just want to read that order?
Yep. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council, pursuant to Charter Section 2-10, affirms the following appointments by the mayor to the Council on Aging. Margot Townley, term to expire December 31, 2024, short term to maintain staggered terms. This was a, oh, sorry.
Second, Ricketts?
This was a positive unanimous recommendation.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of affirming? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none? Positive unanimous. Counselor Bullock?
The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council, pursuant to Charter Section 2-10, affirms the following appointments to the mayor, to the, by the mayor, to the Historical Commission, Matt Abbey, for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2025.
Second, Ricketts?
Motion's been made and seconded.
This was also a positive unanimous recommendation.
Any other discussion on this? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none? Unanimous. Counselor Bullock?
The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council, pursuant to Charter Section 2-10, affirms the following appointments by the mayor to the Public Safety Commission, Ed Jarvis, for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2025.
Second, Ricketts?
Motion's been made and seconded.
This was not a positive unanimous recommendation. I believe that it was, there was one abstention, and the rest were no's.
The four no's and one abstention?
Yes.
Rationale?
So, we had a really good conversation regarding the Public Safety Commission- So we had a really good conversation regarding the Public Safety Commission and regarding appointments. There was a few different points of view that were, that were brought up, mainly the need for a Public Safety Commission overhaul, and the desire for that Public Safety Commission to be, have a broad point of view. It was pretty clear that the, the, the no's were not no's because of the people that were being appointed. The no's were no's because at this point in time, the Public Safety Commission has not moved anything forward. There also is these questions around how appointments are happening, which we discussed earlier, earlier in the, earlier in the meeting. So, you know, as the chair of A&amp;O, my desire with this is that we would see something clear and concrete before we appoint new members to the Public Safety Commission, that there is like a task moving forward, that they're clear about what their tasks are, so that the mayor knows how to appoint and who, who filling those seats is going to make sense because of what they're going to move, the body of work they're going to move forward. There's a few specific things, you know, the Public Safety Commission, I was really great to hear what David said tonight about a written complaints review process that's clear, that's public, that's something that has been passed back and forth for months now. You know, there's another piece for me around hiring policies and practices, especially as we are potentially hiring three new officers. I think it's really important that we have a, a clear process for reviewing this hiring moving forward. So there was a lot of different concerns about the Public Safety Commission, not specifically about the people.
I'm going to open the floor to comments, obviously, from the council. You will see that earlier this evening, I forwarded Section 2-10 and 3-3 of the Charter, which deals with the council review of certain appointments and appointments by the mayor, which are our charter guidelines when we're talking about the individuals that are put forward. And just keep that in mind. And I'll open up the floor. Counselor Elmer?
I'm glad to hear that the negative recommendations weren't directed to any individuals whose names were put forward, but were rather, the committee's wanting to send a message about the process. Having worked with Ed Jarvis for many years, and he's a bit of a hothead, but he's definitely qualified for this. He's had a career as a fire, fireperson, and he brings a lot of experience to the job. So I would be voting for him. Thank you.
Counselor Lapinski?
So I, I share the committee's desire for an overhaul, and, but, but at the risk of maybe hypothetically asking a question cross council, and you can intervene if you want to, why would fully staffing the commission at present be a detriment to being able to overhaul it? I guess that's kind of to Counselor Bullock, but I have to ask your permission.
Was that, was that broached in committee? Because I think that's a good question. I mean, we've heard from commission that they want a full council to, a commission to move forward. So any thoughts along that line from Counselor Lapinski? Did that really come up, Counselor Bullock, or?
Yeah, so it didn't necessarily come up in that question, in, in that context, but fully staffing the Public Safety Commission with the appointments that have been brought before us, pretty much stacks the commission with a point of view that's very similar regarding policing, many which have been voiced publicly over the last nine months since, since the budget vote in May. Personally, I, I have landed on the place with this situation where I am going to vote in favor of Ed Jarvis, and I am going to vote no for Karen Westinger. I think that what Jesus Leva has been put through to try to join this commission is not fair. And I think he actually is more qualified than our other appointment. And so in order to, there's been a request of the mayor to give us something on the Public Safety Commission. There was a request of the Public Safety Commission at the last meeting to bring up some topics that weren't brought up. The idea was that we get something in writing from the Public Safety Commission before we make new appointments, and potentially there's some reevaluation of the appointments that happen.
Counselor Lapinski, do you want me to come back to you after? Are you good at this point? Because that was, I didn't want to move on.
Sure, no, so I had a couple other thoughts, but I'm also, you know, let me just say them, because last time I was going to follow up, but the question got moved.
I, I feel that pain.
No, it, it was all right. It was not important enough. So I think I understand that essentially an overhaul of the commission was personnel-related. I, I'm going to be voting no on this appointment, and the reason is because I believe that the individual is biased in favor of the people that he will be tasked with overseeing. And that precludes any fair and independent assessment of accusations of wrongdoing or needs for improvement. And I suspect that he's going to get appointed anyway. The other individual who we'll be talking about in a minute, I don't know anything about, but I do know that Ed Jarvis has come before this council in the past to advocate for money for police and fire with false and misleading arguments. And I think that disqualifies him from serving in this position, even though he has a background in extraordinary and exemplary public service as a firefighter.
Thank you. Counselor Ricketts?
Thank you. So I'm going to be voting for Ed Jarvis because of his knowledge with the fire department. As somebody who has my father, 57 years in the fire department, and my brother's currently in the fire department at EMT, I think that's important to have that voice there. I'm also going to be voting for the other candidate because she is a woman, and I really feel like we need that. I like to say that this commission is all right, but I hate to say, it's all white. And that's my only problem with the commission, but I'm really putting all my faith right now in Counselor Bullock and Counselor Forgji, because I think they're going to work really hard on bringing lots of ideas to the Public Safety Commission about, number one, making it larger, so that it's going to be not five, but seven people, and that we really have a voice from the council floor and what we'd like to see, and that we could really have some good discussions about police reform. And I think with these two women leading the council in this way, I really think we're going to get the Public Safety Commission that we want. So I want to vote for these two people so that we have the five, and hopefully the state votes soon on the charter changes, so we can have a larger commission and get really diverse, so we have more voices, and it's not just coming from council, that there are people that are actually sitting on the commission. And I'm not, I'm taking myself out of this equation, because I may not even go for it anymore, because I've learned that I've been in this city long enough, that my most powerful voice is when I'm not sitting on any committee, and when I just want to speak. So, yes, I will vote for both of them. And Counselor Forgji and Bullock, I'm counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take a minute to speak, because last time I didn't speak on the, on the question. But I just want to remind everyone a couple of things from the history of this. Remember when we're, I sent out 210 and 333 to remind people that nowhere in here it says we're using these appointments to adjust policy. It talks about the individuals that are coming before us, based on a review of certain appointments, appointments by the mayor. Now, I was all prepared tonight. If someone had come in with Counselor Jarvis and said that he's resigned from the last two committees he served, the city and other candidates have, have stepped forward, that would be more, that would be, that would be a discussion that would have merit. That's what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to look at individuals, qualifications, things along that line. This is kind of, this is torn in, in a lot of directions. So we have to be very careful, because we're, we're given the task of affirming or rejecting, you know, and that's, you know, that's where, that's where we're at tonight. So I just caution everyone to make sure we're looking at the individuals, and this has been done like this for a long time. I mean, 20 years ago, I sat on a council and voted to reject someone that had nothing to do with their credentials. It was a, it was a move by the council, and, and it happened then. And it's changed. And we put the word affirm back in, not approve, because we're not approving, we're affirming. And that, there was a definition to that word. So I just caution everyone, when you're looking at this, we're talking about individuals, and we're talking about people as we move forward with getting this done. Counselor Gilmore?
I see your point, but I would beg to differ slightly, because I feel like we do need to look at the composition of the commission. And as people have mentioned, that commission, you know, there is not a lot of diversity of thought. And I think that Counselor Lapinski is probably the closest to have come saying, you know, to question someone's qualifications by saying that, you know, Ed has come to us and been very vocal about this, and he feels that that could make him biased. And as, you know, Chris alluded to in the last discussion we had, they do have a lot of responsibility. And the people who've been coming to the council, talking to us about holding the police accountable, I've heard a lot of counselors talking about how, you know, this isn't council business, you need to talk to the mayor, you need to talk to the Public Safety Commission. So if we're going to send them to a bunch of people that aren't really going to listen, or cert, or not take them seriously, and there is no representation, that I feel is within our purview. We should be looking at, you know, not just the individual, but the whole, and see what that dynamic's going to be. Because we don't need another rubber stamp board, why have them?
And there are pieces within this that address that also, where you're putting, looking at it as an entity. Counselor Forgji?
President Gwynn, you did mention the information that was given to us this evening from the Charter. And you did tell us that this is the way we, we need to look at things in regard to how we're assessing candidates. However, I do want to point out that in the Charter, it does state that the council can reject an appointment, but nine members of the council need to vote to reject a mayor's appointment. So I just want to bring that out to everybody. Second, I want to say, I have known Ed for a very long period of time. And I, and I truly mean this, and I do respect you, but I have to say, you broke my heart when you left the council, and I find that a bit problematic at this point. So with all the goodwill, you need to know that. And, and I hope you can appreciate my honesty. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counselor Goleb?
I just, I'm, I'm still feeling torn. I feel torn about this. What I said at A&amp;O is that really, truly, it is not about either, either person being put forward, but like Counselor Gilmore said, it's about the composition of the body as a whole. And I believe strongly that there needs to be more diversity of race, of class, of ideology, of many different viewpoints in order to have, in order to have a body that, you know, sees, sees, there's, there's so much to look at and is able to think critically about the issues that come before it. And so, and I was really disappointed in the mayor's response about, she said it's important to her that people know how to work on a committee. And over the last six months, hearing all of, seeing the work that Jesus has put into, into coming to council, being respectful, trying to broker meetings, I, just because you haven't already served on a public body, doesn't mean that you're not capable of serving on a public body. And I think that it's very important that we create space for people who are, haven't yet served. I really don't want to vote no, because this really isn't about any of the individuals, but I want to see, and we asked for this at A&amp;O a couple of months ago, for, to see from the mayor a process for these appointees, and we haven't seen that. Yeah. I'm still feeling torn, but I, I, I don't think that I can support this.
Is there anyone that would like to speak that has not spoken? Counselor Bullock?
Okay. Yeah, so this, I'm just going to say, for your knowledge, Dan, I appreciated you sending this out, I had the information on the charter sections ahead of time. For better, for worse, you made me chair of A&amp;O. And I am going to do what I have the ability to do at this point in time to try to make changes within the city. And it might not fully line up with the intent of the Charter, but I'm here, and I probably won't run again, because this sucks. But, so I'm here, you got me for three more years, you don't have to make me chair next year. But I am going to just say that, you know, I did some thinking this week, I had some conversations, I am going to vote for Ed Jarvis, I read what the, the chief of the fire department sent us regarding overtime, which is, I was very much so appreciated, that like thoughtfully written, ahead-of-time documentation about the issue coming before us. I thought it was going to be on this month's agenda, but we have more time to, to prep for it. So I am going to vote for Ed Jarvis to be a part of this. I am going to ask for the council to vote critically on our next appointment.
Counselor Bullock, I'm just going to address what you said, because it was a, a, kind of a, I am very happy that you're the chair of A&amp;O, and for the same reason that we've accused other bodies, diversity of our council is more important to me than anything. If I just put everybody in a place where I was just going to come in and knew what we were all going to do before we get here, I'd stay home. So, you know, to come in and have open and successful debate and look at things from different ways, I got schooled early on by a counselor that had a lot more years' experience than me, and she, she told me a couple things I never forgot 20 years ago. And, and it's about listening, and it's about listening to other people's ideas, and, and watching when you call the question, to make sure everyone's got a chance to talk. I never forgot those things, because she told me I was wrong, and I believe her to this day. We still don't speak, but she's very, very good. You know, but I, I just want to say, I'm happy with it, you know, you, you know, I'm not going to have to worry about appointing you next year, because I will be watching on TV. But I do appreciate that. So anyone else that hasn't spoken on this?
I would like to speak, please.
And then I'm going to have Counselor Lapinski. Yes, Counselor Mayo?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, like other counselors, have questions about his commitment toward -- not commitment toward his department because, you know, that's certainly indisputable with his years of service. And I don't mean to question that. But he has a certain personality that has a way of saying, you're wrong and I'm right regardless of, and you're all stupid if you don't agree with me. And I don't, I think that's a very poignant thing to remember is that he does come from that school of thought. And I don't think that's very conducive to, in this very important commission, to have that kind of mentality. So, despite his years of service, I think he still needs to be schooled in the ways of stability. And so, I will be voting no against him. Thank you.
Counselor Lapinski.
So, I've already made my position on this appointment clear, but I want to address an aspect of this discussion which I'm frustrated by because I don't think it's pertinent. And that is what has to do with Jesus Leva. And I say that because we are not voting between two candidates here. We're voting on the candidate that the mayor has put forward. And I think he's the wrong candidate. But as we've already heard, Jesus has put his name forward quite a while ago, so it's clear the mayor's not going to appoint him for whatever reason. So, we vote this one down. She's just going to put someone else forward who's going to be another yes man or a woman. And so, the, so I just want to be clear, we cannot vote for Jesus by voting no on Ed, even though we should vote no on Ed. The only way that we can overcome that hurdle is to change the mayor, which we'll have the opportunity to do in November. Finally, on the subject of Ed Jarvis, we coincided on the council for a very brief period of time. And to recap what that looked like, he ran for council president in absentia, even though you can't do that, lost miserably, and then promptly resigned. That is a sore loser and I don't think we need that in our city.
Any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in?
Can we get a roll call?
Okay. And Counselor, Clerk Scott, could you remind us what yes and no mean?
A yes vote would confirm the mayor's, excuse me, affirm the mayor's proposed appointee. A no vote would not. You need nine votes not to appoint.
Any other explanation needed? None? Roll call vote has been asked.
Counselor Goleb?
No.
Counselor Disorder?
No.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Lapinski?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
No.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Toranzo?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
No.
The appointment passes.
Counselor Bullock.
The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following appointment by the mayor to the Public Safety Commission, Karen Westinger, for a term to expire December 31, 2025, short term to replace Michelle Laurie. Majority vote required.
Second, Ricketts.
This was also four noes and one yes.
I think we've heard the rationale. Is there anything unique to this that was in discussion?
I do have, this one I actually think is more appropriate to debate than Ed Jarvis on the merits of appointment. If you look at Karen Westinger's resume or CV or accompanying documents, she doesn't have any past performance or fitness demonstrated by examination or evidence of competency towards this appointment, other than a desire to serve, which I actually think is much needed in most cases and enough to be appointed to a body in the city. In this case, this is where I'm going to ask my fellow counselors to really vote bravely because I do think that we are seeing biased appointments and I do not think that this person has any merits above the other people, not just Jesus. There has been other people who've applied to this commission and I do not think we're seeing a process for appointments that is appropriate.
Counselor Forgie?
Thank you. So, I am going to be thoughtful and probably say a couple of things that might be shocking. I heard the mayor say this evening that it was really important that there be committee experience when she was talking about another potential candidate and why that candidate did not get up, name did not come forward. But if I look at this resume as well, there's no committee experience. So, I really have to take that into consideration. The other thing that I've heard other counselors say is that they're going to vote because this candidate is female. And I, this may come as a shock, but I do not think that that is a, what do I want to say? I do not think that that's a qualification in and of itself. I think that's really, in a way, kind of pandering to, you know, to political correctness and I have a problem with that. This is, in my opinion, a public safety commission is a heavy-duty commission of the city of Greenfield. And I think that we do need experienced people on that commission. I would be very resistant to putting someone who does not have any committee experience or any governmental experience on this board. So, again, being a woman is not a qualification in and of itself. Being an experienced woman or a knowledgeable woman or somebody who has a community service record makes a lot of sense to me, but in this case, I will not be voting in favor of this candidate.
Anyone else like to speak? Counselor Elmer.
Is Karen here today? Can we ask her to defend her application?
Second.
No, that's not appropriate. Okay.
Just so folks know, we did hear from both the candidates during A&amp;O and, like, this process is terrible. I don't know Karen and I would love for her to volunteer for the city. I just don't think this is the appropriate capacity at this moment in time.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor Lapinski.
Well, I would really like to hear from Karen, but, so, at the risk of not receiving a second, I move that we recognize Karen Westinger.
I'm not sure what you're asking. Are you asking?
I made a motion, but I didn't get a second. The charter provides that we can recognize members of the public to communicate with us.
Yeah.
But I didn't get a second, so I'll just say what I want to say, which is?
She was invited to A&amp;O and she came to A&amp;O and that's our process. And if she had wanted to share or what have you, we could have asked her in that capacity, but that didn't come from A&amp;O. So, Counselor Bullock, anything else on that?
Well, I wasn't.
Counselor Lapinski, did you have a follow-up question?
Sure, sure. I was just going to make my comment on this appointment, which is that, again, we can't, like, our task here is to vote to affirm or not to affirm this appointment and it's not to affirm or not to affirm another appointment that might have been made. I'm going to vote no on this. If I had been able to ask some questions, I don't know what would happen, but I don't have a lot of trust in the mayor's selection. So, I'm not going to be voting no in the hopes that we get a different one. I'm just going to be voting no. And I'll probably vote no on the next appointment the mayor brings forward as well.
Counselor Ricketts.
Yeah, I just want to thank all my fellow counselors who are on A&amp;O and/or on other committees of council. I just want to thank everyone for coming and being in attendance so they get to hear all of this and get to listen and ask questions and share then. That's why we have committees and that's why we meet more than on council night, the night we vote. Thank you.
Anyone else like to discuss anything on this? Seeing none? A roll call vote? We all understand what we're doing, yes to affirm, no to not affirm.
Counselor Goleb?
No.
Counselor Disorder?
No.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Bullock?
No.
Counselor Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Lapinski?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Vice President Forgie?
No.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Toranzo?
No.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes. Yes.
The appointment fails.
The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following appointments by the mayor to the Sustainable Greenfield Implementation Committee. I can't remember how to say her last name. It's not.
Mary Chicoen.
Chicoen. Mary Chicoen, for a term to expire December 31, 2024, a short term to maintain staggered terms.
Second, Ricketts.
This was a unanimous positive recommendation with much love for this applicant.
Is there any other discussion on this applicant? Counselor Elmer.
Yeah, I sit on the Sustainable Greenfield Implementation Committee and I've had some interaction with Mary and she's going to be a very strong, a scary voice. Anyway, I'm going to vote yes on this one.
Any others? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any objections? Seeing none? That passes. Counselor Bullock.
The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council vote to amend the city council rules of procedure 565-14, Rule 14, request by counselors for legal opinions, material as written in Exhibit A attached. I don't need to read it all, right?
Correct.
Great. This was a unanimous positive recommendation.
Can I get a second on this?
Second, Ricketts.
Thank you. Any background on this piece?
Yeah, we discussed this piece in A&amp;O last year and basically, it just clarified a couple of language pieces in here where it changed like information to opinion material, that sort of thing. But it also put into place that if there's a rejection, so if one of us requests a legal opinion, we request it of the president and the vice president. And this put into place that if that request is denied, it can be put on the council meeting agenda for consideration by the full council. And if the majority of the full council approves the measure, it would proceed to the next step in the process to get that legal opinion. And then there is a piece around payment that's spelled out clearly in how you choose your legal counsel. So, this was discussed and last year and then we sort of gave a recap this meeting and it was positively, people were in favor for it.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Moves? Counselor Bullock. This was put on the agenda directly because it's a Scrivener's error. If you could just read that for me.
Okay. The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council amends by acknowledging a Scrivener's error, the code of the city of Greenfield, Chapter 394, tag sales, as written in the draft attached here too. Section 394-3, registration required, insert the word until after the word sale in the first sentence. And further amend the index of the code and further that no substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield.
Second, Toranzo.
Motion, Spanish. Counsel, City Clerk Scott, could you just give us a quick reason that this happened? It's very minor.
So, the council, I believe in October, voted the tag sale ordinance. In the strike draft that was provided to the council, the word until was stricken. It needs to be in there for grammatical reasons. So, this order corrects that Scrivener's error of the strike through that should not have been there.
Any other discussion on this maintenance piece? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Presentations of anything? I don't believe so. Reports on committees? Is there any committees that would like to speak? I will say that I spoke this week with Counselor Forgie and she is going to take on the role for the council on the mayor's committee on domestic violence as the council representative. I thought that was a perfect place as she created that committee. So, it was very nice to see her back in a different role from the council. So, that's a new role that Counsel Forgie will be filling for us. Anything from anyone other committees? I know we're going through a little bit of growth and changes, times, structures. Please talk with your chairs. I know Ways and Means is looking at maybe some possible changes. C, Community Relations is talking about, you know, they're changing how we do things quarterly and then with a precinct. So, listen for Counsel Forgie getting in touch with you on those pieces. Counsel Disorder?
We could not meet because of technical difficulties, but we may be, we didn't get to have a discussion, but I'm hoping that my fellow Ways and Means members will know that for our next month, we probably will be changing the night so that we have time to meet. And I think, President Gwynn, that we also have a first reading at the end.
Yes. Thank you. Any other reports from committees? Any unfinished business? Any old business? New business? We have some first readings. First of all, we have a proposal from Counselor Ricketts. She brought forward to start the full city council meetings at 6:00 PM instead of 6:30 PM. We have talked about this before on People's Times and also the Ways and Means piece, which Counsel Disorder is looking into. Counsel Ricketts, any, do you want to talk to that?
No.
Oh, no. If Ways and Means are gonna do it on Tuesday nights, and it leaves Wednesday free, and it's only council meeting, then yes, I would love to start at 6:00, but if the majority wants to stay at 6:30, then that's fine. I'm not married to it. I just would like to start earlier, because almost every committee in commission and the city is at 5:30 or 6:00, and I would just like to just get started a little earlier, if we could.
Councilor Bullock.
I had a little bit of another idea, because I don't know, Penny, if this is the actual issue, is that we're here for a very long time, but I was wondering what, if it would be possible for us to hold our meetings from 6:30 to 10:30, and if we do not finish a meeting by 10:30, we have to come back on Thursday. Which maybe having an end cap on our meeting will help us facilitate through in a quicker way. I will say, I talked to a few people who felt like 6:00 would be a hard time, because then if people missed, if you're, like, traveling from work from out of town, and you get back into town, and then you miss public comment, and then there's no public comment at the end, and so, like, there was a little pushback on the 6:00 start time from the few people that I talked to, but I think that, for me, it's actually when we go until, like, midnight that I'm wrecked the next day. So, if we could be like, let's do our meeting 6:30 to 10:30, and if we go later than 10:30, we just have to come back.
Let me just give you some mass general law. In order to have a meeting the next day, we would have to post every meeting as Wednesday and Thursday. We couldn't wait till Wednesday to have a meeting Thursday, because then we don't have legality to post it. Doesn't mean we couldn't post every meeting, but then we would be canceling a meeting at the end of the Wednesday meeting. If we finished, we'd be canceling the Thursday's meeting, so it could sound odd to the public that they're canceling another meeting when it's really posted only because of legality. So, it gets a little odd.
Point of order. Do we have a motion on the floor?
No, we have a discussion.
Got it.
Councilor Gilmore.
So, when I started on the city council, we used to start at 7:00, and there was a proposal to start at 6:00 that didn't go through, and then, I think, the following year, we decided to start at 6:30, and the whole point was that we're here really late, we're voting on really important decisions in the wee hours of the morning sometimes, except what I found when we moved to 6:30 is that we didn't get out a half an hour earlier, and we weren't less tired, but we sit in the chairs a half an hour longer. It's just tacked on at the beginning. And that's why I like the idea of a hard stop, and I get what you're saying, that there's some, like, there are some serious considerations that we would have to make, and we don't want this to be a tool that's used, that, you know, you don't want something to get voted on, you put it at the end of the agenda. So, I could see how that could be a problem, but there really needs to be some way to study how we're using our time, because I, this feels like a reasonable hour for us to get it. I can go to work tomorrow, I don't have to call in sick. There are other ways that we can do this and have meetings like tonight.
And I think we started to look at some of those. You know, we talked about splitting public comment, and that had its objections, and it was only meant to do the same thing, was to get us voting earlier. Now, we have a 6:00. I, it was 7:00 when I first came back, and then we voted to 6:00. It was, it was 6:30, and, you know, we, we moved it, we moved it from 7:00 to 6:30, and now, so, who else would like to speak on this? Councilor Toranzo, and then Lapinski.
I was just gonna say, I think regardless of how we do it, there's gonna be hiccups for some people versus others. I think what's important to mention is, as Councilor Rickett said, a lot of the committees meet earlier. I also think that that's why, one, could be one reason why a lot of, there's not a lot of public engagement in a lot of those committees, because they happen while people are at work, so you get either, for the most part, retirees or bust, or people who just might happen to have a different work schedule that a lot of folks don't. Also, I understand going late, because a lot of people get up in the morning. I, I think if we, I think something we run into, and it's not, it's not that we get caught in these kind of cyclical conversations a lot of time, and it's not, and it's because we're trying to thoughtfully debate it, but at the same time, I, I think if there was more engagement into the subcommittees, that, you know, maybe a subcommittee meeting might only go, like, an hour normally, but if there was, I don't know. As we've talked about before, some questions get answered at, especially, man, I remember budget season last year being so frustrated that so many, so many of the same questions we asked in subcommittee ended up being asked when we brought to the full council, and I, I just think that some of this time, the long meetings, could, could be shortened by more homework, I mean, or more engagement outside of the meetings to some degree or another. I don't know if that's an answer, but I, I just don't, I think it's gonna hamper people either way, and if we go into a second day, I mean, I can only speak for myself on this, but then I gotta all of a sudden be ready to have another day of childcare. To what end? Because do we have a time limit on how late we go Thursday? I mean, we were at one of these meetings for almost seven hours, so what if that one turned into, what if the Thursday meeting turns into a six-hour meeting after we just had a four-hour the night before? So, I mean, there's, I don't know, I don't think that there's really a good way, other than whatever hits us on the agenda that, that month.
I, I agree. I, believe me, I, I turned to Clerk Scott and said, we're in a different day. Did I not post this meeting? Because we were at midnight. We, you know, our, our Wednesday was already Thursday, or, or, you know, we were already in another day, two meetings ago, so. Councilor Disorder.
I, I don't want to start it any earlier, because I remember the discussion from before. There were, you know, working people, people with families that can't participate, and I definitely agree with what Councilor Toranzo said. Tonight, I'm, I'm not a member of A&amp;O, but I watched that meeting after it was over. It's on GCTV. It's wonderful that you, you do that, so, thank you. And I watch them so that I'm not making the, the meetings longer, that they're right on your computer, and you do a great job with that. I can see the part about the end of the night. I don't like having a big, you know, to vote on multimillion-dollar things. I think that that would bear a little bit more thinking about. The town that I came from, we, when it, we stopped at midnight. You know, like, 11:30, the moderator wasn't allowed to take anything else up new, because you're probably not making a good decision, but that childcare argument gets to me, too. You'd have to have two nights covered. You'd have to have another night that you had to plan to have a babysitter, which actually means that we're eliminating some younger people from being on council, and I think that's a very important thing to, to, to think about, so it's not something I'd be ready to make a decision on, but...
Councilor Lapinski.
So, I, I was fam, when I used to live in Northampton, I was famous for, as an ordinary citizen, sitting through all of their meetings for a full calendar year, which was 2013. They meet twice a month, and I'm bringing that up because they meet twice a month, right? There's a lot of things that they do well in Northampton. What we do well here is we thoroughly debate the issues. My point is, two meetings a month, they still went till 1:30 in the morning sometimes. So, whatever amount of time we give ourselves, we're going to use up that time, and we're going to, and, and, might I add, that we are not wasting our time, we are using it well. The discussions that we have, whether they're early or whether they're late, are necessary, and if all people want to do is go home, then they should resign from council and do exactly that. Here's my view on starting earlier versus starting later. Do you have a point of order, Council Ricketts?
Let's continue.
So, my thoughts on starting earlier are, don't want to? I would like to start later. My personal preference would be that we start at 6:30 in the winter and 7:30 in the summer, because as one of, most of the people on this council work in an office, but there's three of us who work in construction, and it kills me to get off of work at 5:00, to eat dinner, and to come here in broad daylight and sit in a room. But in the winter, that's fine. But what I would actually like to suggest that we do, that's my personal preference. What I would suggest that we do is put it on the agenda for a discussion at the organizational meeting, so that the new council can make its own decisions. I don't want to make a decision now for a bunch of people that haven't even decided to run yet. I would say, let the, every two years, let that council, before it, before it begins, decide when they want to meet, and I don't think it makes sense for us to make that decision when we're just about at the end of a term.
All right. Thanks for discussion on this. I'll take it under advisement. Moving on, first readings. Councilor Disorder.
Let me get that paper clip off. Go back to that.
You weren't packing that quick.
Yes. City Council, first reading, February 15th, 2023. Appropriate $200,000 from borrowing to pay costs of a lead service line inventory and replacement plan program. Approve payment of invoice for Connecticut Business Systems of $104 from fiscal year 23 Veterans Various Paper Products. Transfer $16,865.78 from fiscal year 23, 010011320.5781 Reserve Account to the fiscal year 23 Library Account, 01006100.5241 Building and Grounds Maintenance.
Thank you. Clerk Scott, can you tell me what this note is again here?
Councilor Bullock, myself, and Tammy Marsiell worked, Councilor Bullock worked, we just followed the lead, to create a Google form for councilors to provide informational requests for council business, not a public records request. We sent that out with some instructions and a policy to go along with it on when the information would be provided. This does not preclude anyone from putting requests in writing rather than using the Google form. This is just a preferred document to use when submitting information requests. I just wanted to let everyone know that that email went out yesterday? Thank you.
Our intention on all of these is to make sure that we're tracking what we're asking, and that's all that we're doing now, and making sure. No motions for reconsideration?
Can I actually, there's one other new business thing that I wanted to just bring up.
Yeah, of course.
I don't know where this is appropriate, or, or how, but, you know, I, I did speak to Vice President Forgie about this this week, and I just wanted to let folks know that there was a FOIA request that went into the city from the police department. Initially, it was for all of our council emails that had the word "police" in it, and that were for the entire month of January, and there was another request that went in that was for every police officer's correspondence with every counselor for the month of January. My understanding is those have been closed and withdrawn, but there is another request. I haven't seen it yet, but I know it included myself and the word "police," and, you know, this, that got me on a little sleuthing expedition in next request, where I then found that in May, after the budget vote happened, that myself and three other councilors, that a police officer had searched our, any police calls to our residences in the last five years. And so, I just wanted to put it out on public record, that this is the type of climate that we're in right now between departments within the city and the council. I don't necessarily think there's a request, but it was, seemed like the best way to let everyone know what my last week was like.
Councilor Bullock, I know you had a discussion with Councilor Forgie. I will have a concert conversation with Councilor Forgie to find out if we feel that there was any thing that violated any policy. I'm just saying that I want to make sure. It's, you know, one of my jobs is to take care of this council, so I'll look at that and make sure that it was done. Councilor Forgie had a couple of suggestions, and we'll take a quick look at that, but I appreciate you bringing that forward. Councilor Gilmore.
Yes, so, I know, and all, you know, all of us should know that our emails are, are public, but I think that sometimes when constituents contact us, they, they might not realize that, and if they feel like they have some semblance of, like, you know, attorney-client privilege, or, or whatever sort of, you know, it feels, I know that they don't, but do they? And that, I, I was just wondering if, you know, if that does come up in the future, could names be redacted, so at least we're public officials, and we're out here on TV saying what we need to say? But if someone comes to me in confidence because they're scared, could the names re-redacted at all?
Let me check on that with the clerk.
Thank you.
And I'll find out about that. And you just mentioned something, and I'll just say it because it was a thought. I just want to remind councilors also, when you're not in the council arena, if, you know, or at a meeting, if you're out at a public meeting, or you're, please determine, are you there as a citizen or as a counselor? And if you go to a meeting and you, and you speak on behalf of the council, that is one thing. If you go to a meeting and speak on behalf of yourself, that is another thing. So, just remember in your identifier that I always say, when I go to a public meeting, I give my name, I give my address, I say, I'm not here on behalf of the council or the radio station, I'm here with my opinion, and I'm just reminding people that sometimes it's very hard when you're a counselor, that your personal views are not necessarily the views of the entire council, so please watch how that's portrayed when you're speaking in terms of, I'm the counselor. Just a reminder. And you just said that when you were talking. Councilor Elmer.
Yeah, I'd like to move for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. The meeting is adjourned at 9:46 PM.